This program is recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television. The audio for this program can be heard on WRFP LP 101.9 FM.
The Eau Claire City Council Candidates Forum, recorded Thursday, March 10th, 2016.
Good evening, and welcome to our Meet the Candidates Forum. I'm John Murphy, representing WYYI, 790 radio, and I'll be serving as your moderator tonight. We appreciate your attendance tonight to learn more about the candidates and their positions on various issues that affect our community. We want to thank Chippewa Valley Technical College for hosting the event at this conference center, and this event sponsored by the Leader Telegram, WQW TV 18, WYYI, Chippewa Valley Community Television, and Eau Claire Area Chamber of Commerce. Eau Claire citizens have a city council election each year. Last year's voters elected representatives for each of the five geographic districts in the city, and next year the city council president will be up for election. This year, 2016, voters will elect representatives to serve three-year terms in the five at-large seats. In addition, there is an election to fill the remaining two years of the District One council seat. It became vacant last year because of the death of city council member Dave Duhax. The city council appointed Tim T. Waltz to fill the vacancy until the next election. I will introduce each of tonight's candidates in a moment, and the format for the forum tonight is as follows. There are four questions. Each candidate will be given one minute and 30 seconds to answer each question. Each candidate will also have a two-minute closing statement. The timekeeper will give signals at each 30-second mark, and a stop signal to the candidates during all of the questions. It's always a good time for me to ask the candidates, any of you have a problem with the concept of "stop"? Sometimes we do have to tell you to "stop," when it means "stop." Don't run through the lights, so there you go. Because of the time limitation, there will not be an opportunity for questions from the audience. The first answer, each question, will be rotated between candidates running for the same district seat to assure fairness. The candidates for city council are Kate Beaton, Eric Larson, Catherine Emanuel, David Strobel, Michael Shon. In addition, one other name will be on the at-large ballot. However, Jody Thompson has informed us that she's withdrawn from the race and will be unable to serve if elected, but that will be on the at-large ballot. For District One, Tim T. Waltz and Heather DeLuca. Chippewa Valley Community Television is video recording the forum tonight. There will be scheduled broadcast times for tonight's forum, as well as on-demand viewing at Community Television's website, cvctv.org. The seating order for tonight's forum was determined by random drawing. All candidates will have the opportunity to answer each question. The first-answer question will be rotated among the candidates. So after all the disclaimers, let's begin the Candidates' Forum. And we will start, question one, we'll go to Kate Beaton. Are TIFF districts in Eau Claire being used effectively? What, if anything, would you propose to do differently in the future?
Yes, I do believe that TIFF districts are being used effectively. If we look at the previous TIFF districts that have existed in Phoenix Park and then the Oakwood Hills area, it seems that they've been extremely successful. Now, one in five jobs in Eau Claire exist downtown, and the Oakwood Hills area is the highest tax revenue, has the area with the highest tax revenue. So, in my opinion, I think that that is extremely successful and should continue. I think it's important to remember, when we are looking at TIFF districts, especially downtown, that we protect historic buildings, that we're not tearing down buildings that deserve to be there. I think that the livery is a really great example of how a historic building was used respectfully and effectively to create something new and beautiful. In the future, I would like to refer to some research that was done by Tom Kemp, our own Tom Kemp from UW-Phler. He found that TIFF districts are most likely to succeed when a city is being financially responsible in other areas. So, I feel that that has been happening so far, but in the future, I think that that should continue to happen. Thank you.
Same question to Eric Larson.
Thank you. I agree with Ms. Beaton that we, you know, Eau Claire had used our TIFF districts very responsibly. We're very conservative with the use of TIFF districts here in Eau Claire. You look at many other communities in Wisconsin, the size of Eau Claire, and some a little bit larger, some of them have as many as 30 TIFF districts. We have 11, and more than half of those are closed. So, and if you look at, I believe our first TIFF district was in the Oakwood Hills area, which began as with no development at all, and of course, we know what's out there now. A good deal of tax revenue was created and raised because of the development in that area. With the tax limits that we have in place now in Wisconsin, it becomes even more critical for us to create tax increment in creative ways. I think we've done that quite well. And in particular, now we have ongoing TIFF districts in downtown, and they have done very well for our city. We've used them not just to develop the housing and the businesses, but to create a place in downtown that's attractive for the region and is attractive for keeping and employing college graduates here. Have a stop.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. The same question to Catherine Emanuel.
Yes, I think that our financing tools have been effective to the letter of the law and to the spirit of the law. The spirit of the law is to use this public finance tool to encourage growth that would not otherwise occur. This finance tool has given a jumpstart to projects that have significantly changed the landscape of Eau Claire for the better, from development in industrial parks to significant redevelopment to our downtown, including the new parking structure, mixed-use development, and the gem in the heart of our city that is the Confluence. The benefits of the finance tool span well beyond public infrastructure. We see private market benefits, such as emerging workforce with hundreds of young employees who are choosing to make Eau Claire their home, to unique hotels that we, as locals, will get to enjoy, to cultural activities every night in our city. I think that we should put together a policy that allows carefully vetted projects to perhaps use the TIFF finance tool throughout the entire city, and I am in support of that. As one civic leader recently told me, "Eau Claire is entering a magnificent time of golden years, and each tool that our city can leverage will continue to put Eau Claire on the map as a place that is resilient, that moves forward, and thrives."
Thank you. Same question to Michael Shon.
Thank you. I also, yes, I also believe that TIFF use is effective for economic reason in downtown areas, for the Confluence project, and also the new parking ramp on Russell Street. Also, back in time, the Phoenix Park also used effectively, and another point is the industrial park for commercial use. In the future, the city is planning to create a new TIFF policy. We have rules for creating district for use in the future. Thank you.
And the question next to David Strobel.
Does that work? I could agree or disagree with my fellow councilmembers and candidates up here a little bit. I think TIFF is a very good development tool, but my understanding of TIFF was always that it was meant to build infrastructure, to get your property ready for development. And I think where we've gone a little bit different on that lately is some of the private developer incentives. And I think those are okay to a point, but we may have opened that door, and to be quite honest, if I was a developer now, I don't know that I would not come to the city council for a developer incentive if I was building in a TIFF. So, I think if you look at as close as Altoona with their River Prairie, they put a lot of money into infrastructure there, and I think they only need one small developer incentive to, that's the first tenant there, Oakwood. And all the other development over there, I don't think anybody is getting a developer incentive, so I would be cautious of that. So I guess that's what I would want to be a little bit careful of, and I would also like to see TIFFs a little bit shorter, 30 years. I think they go to public infrastructure like the parking ramp. I think another good place would be the parking ramp that we have downtown, the Old City Center Parking Ramp. I think that's a great use of TIFF on a public infrastructure. So, there are places for it, but I'm just cautious of the developer incentives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strobel, for the benefit of television and the audience here. Let me restate the question again. Are TIFF districts in Eau Claire being used effectively? What, if anything, would you propose to do differently in the future? We next go to Tim T. Waltz.
Thank you. I think it's an excellent question, and boy, I love Eau Claire. I think we've seen some great growth through our TIFF use. We've seen it downtown, we've seen it out in Oakwood. And it is a good question where we look at developing partnerships that help the town flourish, and we see a great balance between those public and private parts. So I think it's been a very effective thing. You know, what, if anything, would I change? Well, it's very interesting, just Tuesday, we were in a work team to start asking that question. What is a TIFF? When is it eligible? What should be the criteria for awarding that? And those are the factors that we want to do. So, we have three main goals. The first starts with the "but," or if not "for" this financing, what would we be able to do? We can remove blighted, we can develop an industrial area, or multi-use area. So I think the question that we look at is how can we best be best stewards of it? And I agree with much of the ideas that people have already shared in the question, to be good stewards, to use those effectively as they fit. So that's my understanding and use of TIFFs. It's been a positive thing, and Eau Claire is just going to get brighter and brighter as we see the sun get warmer. Thank you.
Next, we'll go to Heather DeLuca.
Well, I guess to be the last one to talk about TIFF. Sorry about that. I am the last one to be talking about TIFFs then. Many of the people have put out the definition, and the one thing that I think a lot of people forgot was, the first thing on a TIFF is you need to, the property or the area has to be blighted. And then, after you determine that it is blighted, then you, if not for that TIFF, you would not be able to develop in that area, or people won't be interested in developing in that area. I agree that, with Mr. Larson, that 28 to 30 years is quite a long time for a TIFF district. I also believe that Eau Claire has been a bit quick to offer the incentives, to taxpayer dollars to offer to the developers to build. I just can't believe that here in Eau Claire, our Walmart, Oakwood Mall, RCU down in Phoenix Park, Hutchinson, wouldn't build, have built their buildings there if we hadn't offered them incentives. I believe that if the area is, the need is there, the development will be something that a developer will be able to do. I also am concerned that a lot of our, we're looking at building new, 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 and...
Okay.
I'm out of time.
She's out of time. Take a breath, in fact, because you'll get the next question. You're coming up on our next round, so take a breath there.
Yeah, I forgot to watch for the tone.
That's okay, no problem. So this is the second question for all the candidates here. What, as a city council member, can you do to ensure the public's investment in the Confluence Arts Center is adequately protected? And we will start with this question with Heather DeLuca.
Oh, good. Okay, so, I did want to just, I'm just going to add a little bit from the first one, because I think that we have to go back and look at our existing infrastructure and our aging housing. It's great to have new things, but I think we also need to make sure that we're looking at the majority of Eau Claire is not in the new section, it's in the older section, so we need to make sure our taxpayer dollars is being used in that direction. Okay, so now I'm going to go to my second question. I wasn't in favor of the project initially, because the state funding wasn't there, but I'm impressed at the way the city has surrounded the project and brought forth and raised money. And so, now I'm moving forward and going to support the project. I think we need to look at the big picture. What worries me about the nonprofit is if it were to dissolve, do we have a contingency plan to cover? If they're no longer going to take care of the theater? And also, do we already know what the ongoing costs are going to be, and are we going to be able to cover those costs? Thank you.
Let's move that question now on to Tim T. Waltz.
Thank you. First of all, I want to give my compliments to the city managers, the city staff, who have worked really hard to ensure that we are protected on that project. They have built-in milestones, working with council, to define what steps should come first, what should become second, and then we will get money out to let it out when that is mapped, and we've got those milestones, multiple parts along that project. We also look for due diligence for the states participate, for the benefactors participate, so that we were not at risk with our trusted funds that we have from the city. You know, and not only at the start of the project, but we've had that all the way through. Down the line, we'll see the same excellent commitment to serve in the public interest. There are always going to be changes, there are always going to be things we don't see, things we can't see, regardless how much I shake the magic eight ball to know which way to make decisions. But we have a great tradition of making good decisions, wise stewards from our heritage, from our culture, and being responsible with the dollars. So whatever may come, I'm confident the city, the council, and the community will meet those challenges on, and I'm looking forward to us enjoying it in short form. Thank you.
The question next goes to David Strobel.
Thank you. I think the city has already done a great part of that to try to make it successful. Like, three years when I sat up here, I was opposed to a lot of it, but I guess I was opposed to city ownership. I didn't want to be in the city to be under the backstop for operating losses. I think the fixed subsidy that we have now that comes directly from Visit Eau Claire room tax money does not come through the city, and the city's not the owner of it anymore, it's owned by a nonprofit. So, I think we have a finite exposure for future operating losses, which will actually sunset over time, so I think that was good. I was also asked to be on the design committee, and I was extremely impressed with all the work that went into the design of the facility, all the wants and the needs that were boiled down into the final plan that's been put forth. And I think we have, you know, Visit Eau Claire is going to be spaced there, that's built-in revenue, the university's going to share in some of the costs as well. And so I think if the facility's built without debt, I think it has a really good chance of succeeding, and I think all we need now is the citizens just happy to go and support it.
Thank you, Mr. Strobel. The question we're working on now is what, as a city council member, can you do to ensure the public's investment in the Confluence Arts Center is adequately protected? Next, we go to Michael Shon.
Thank you. There is a ownership group called, it consists of the city manager and city's council presidents, and there is a contract that assigns to protect the cities. Also, we have a city representative called Confluence Councils, which the financial director, who is also working with this group, so I'm pretty confident that they will go along. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shon. Next, the question to Catherine Emanuel.
On my time on the council, I have worked hard to be a problem solver. Instead of finding ways to say no to progress, I've advocated for ways to responsibly protect and preserve what we have and what our community aspires to be. Protecting a sound public investment into the arts center will be no exception. I'll share two examples. First, as a board member for Visit Eau Claire, I worked to approve funding that would contribute $200,000 a year from hotel room tax to operate funds of the community arts center. These funds will support day-to-day operations and complement our public investment. Second, our community can trust that even when outside forces threaten our public funding, I will communicate with the public, and when necessary, I'll work to bring people together to amplify our voices to protect that funding. When the state temporarily rescinded their support for the Confluence project, I gathered a group of supporters to the site, made our case to the press, and later that week, with many people advocating and many, many people working so very hard, millions of dollars of funding was restored to the project.
Thank you. Next, let's move on with that question to Eric Larson.
Thank you. I think it's important to recognize the work that's already in place to protect public funds with regard to the operation of the Confluence Performing Arts Center. I know that from my earliest involvement in negotiations and development work with the Confluence project, I was opposed to the public ownership of the building. It's now going to be owned by a nonprofit organization and managed by a Confluence council that was put together by a Confluence council task force, which I also served on. Our city manager, our finance director, and our council president are all involved at some level in the management and decision-making structure of the Confluence project. Also, during the negotiations of the development agreement, it was decided that the Performing Arts Center would be required to have a reserve fund available that would be used up in front of any public monies that might help offset losses in the program. And the public monies, if it ever did come to that, are capped at $1 million. So a lot of work has gone into preserving and protecting public assets of this project. And I had one more point, but I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. And Kate Beaton with that question next.
Well, I think it's important to look at what has made this project so strong to begin with. I think that the public-private and nonprofit partnership has really made this project as successful as it is, and I think to continue to go in that direction, to ensure that the university and the arts, the arts community continues to stay involved with this project is going to really lead to its success. In addition, I think that the environmental sustainability is a growing priority in Eau Claire, and I would really like to see it be, see the building be LEED certified at a gold standard, at a gold level. I think that this would, like I said, feed the interest in environmental sustainability, but also address operating costs, and we'll save on those operating costs. Lastly, I think that we should continue to develop downtown, and more importantly, make sure that people, all people in Eau Claire feel welcome at this new facility, not only people who live downtown, but all people in Eau Claire, so that we can make sure that all of our residents are making it downtown and enjoying the new facility. I'd also like to add that I am a graduate of the university here in Eau Claire, and I think that I am in a fair position to be a connection between the university, who has strong investment in the project, and the city, and all of the other investors as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. We're halfway through our questions this evening, and let's move on to question three. And Catherine Emanuel will start off with this. What features should the city put into the Haymarket Plaza next to the Confluence Arts Center? Should it include a pedestrian bridge to Phoenix Park, and if so, how could it be paid for?
The public plaza is basically a pie-shaped piece between a mixed-use building and the performing arts center, and I absolutely support a pedestrian bridge to be added to the project, and the city should explore every avenue for financing that, including seeking grant dollars, which I understand the city is pursuing. In addition to that, I advocate for and help to raise funds for placemaking, the civic, excuse me, for a civic engagement tool that's called placemaking, and we brought that tool to our community, which brought citizens together to help dream and plan the public plaza. Many people in this room helped to donate funds to that project, and I thank you for believing in that meaningful exercise. Of course, the city relies on public engineers and architects to provide professional renderings of design, but instead of professional expertise only, our public plaza will emphasize "our public place," the people's plaza, which will reflect our collective dreams. The results of the civic engagement planning include no duplication of other nearby park amenities, rather things such as fire pits and places for people to safely go and touch the water, to many generations sitting and enjoying the area, to having a cook pitch, which would be pretty fun. This pie-shaped park will be in the middle of housing, restaurants, retail shops, and whether it's a public plaza or any other community endeavors, I will continue to support putting people in the middle of our civic life.
Let's move on with that question to Michael Shon.
Thank you. Recently, the city has conducted a study, asking people what they want to see happen in that area, in that plaza. And the city had come up with, citizens had come up with some questions and answers, what they want to see happen there. They want to have a place where they can be relaxed, on benches, tables, playable, they can listen to music, and can sit at the river. And it's something they want, just a little place that they can sit there, people they want to do. So some of this they want to see happen. I think that will be attracting people coming downtown after you have those kind of benches and places for people to enjoy, you know, listen to music. And it would be easier for people, who actually, how do they pay? They, I guess, will be paid by city capital funds, and also do fundraising, like council mayor mentioned earlier. And again, I want to go back, that this will bring more people downtown, be more attractive if we get kind of this ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shon. Once again, let's restate the question for everyone here. What features should the city put into the Haymarket Plaza next to the Confluence Arts Center? Should it include a pedestrian bridge, bridge to Phoenix Park? And if so, how could it be paid for? The question next goes to David Strobel.
Thank you. I said we should have a skating rink down there, but nobody's listening to me. And the kind that has the plastic, like they have the hockey place there, so you can take it up in the summertime. I think in the wintertime, skating would be awesome down there, so that's my plug. I think that we've had a process that engages the public, and I think they're getting a lot of feedback on that, and like they do on everything, you get as much feedback as possible, and then you try to incorporate as much as you can into that plan for the plaza. As far as the bridge goes, the bridge has been in concepts, on plans downtown since prior to the Confluence project, you know, but at some point, it may be more of a wanted and need right now, and funding is always the issue. My thing is, I think if it ever gets built, I just want to make sure it gets done right. I'm not sure that the location shown in the most recent schematic there from the Confluence is the correct location for it. And I have great confidence in our city engineer, Dave Silver, who can possibly, I'm hoping that he's looking for DOT funding, for any type of funding we can get for the bridge, including donations. So, that's my hope.
Question goes next to Tim T. Waltz.
Thank you. You know, the plaza would serve as that quintessential "what is Eau Claire." It is a place to meet, it is a place together. It's been planned that that would serve day and nighttime meetings, perhaps a time to gather around the fire, look out at the water. I don't live on the water, but I did get access to the water because I married up, and that family that I married into has a cottage on a lake, and it is wonderful to see. And it sets a tone that says, "We're in Eau Claire, and these are some of the things. We take time to reflect, we take time to enjoy the wonderful area." You know, should we have a bridge, and how will it be funded? I would start with the radio and TV personalities. I'm sure they could just write a check. I say that tongue check, "cheep," but unless they're going to volunteer right now. But one of the things, I look at that and say, "That is a great question, and that is what we're going to go to the public with and talk." It is a dialogue, it is a way to connect with that. Is this something the public wants? Then we will see those doors open, and if not, we will look at those avenues, and maybe not. So I think it's too early in the project to say definitely, "Is that bridge going to be there?" But I really support the public discourse of that. Thank you.
Thank you, and me without my checkbook, isn't that good for you? Next, let's move on with the same question to Heather DeLuca.
As far as the Haymarket Plaza, I think a river walk would be an excellent way to move people through the area. It could also be connected to the bike trail. The bridge, I think it's important to finish the project. I think we need to use the project and then let the need determine whether we need the bridge or not. I think it's a little too early to put that into motion right now. I think that you should have areas to sit and eat. And of course, if you're going to have the bike path nearby, you need bike racks for people to lock their bikes up so that they can then go about and look at the shops or restaurants and take advantage of that area. Where would I find the funding? I would probably look to see if the transportation budget could provide some funding. The bike trail funding could give some, the nonprofit group could give some. Grants would be great. And if you're going to go to look at the taxpayers for funding, I think now is a perfect time, since all the elections are on. If you want to put something on the ballot and just get their opinion, this would be an excellent time to do that. Thank you.
Next, the question moves on to Kate Beaton.
Yes, I do support a bicycle and pedestrian bridge near the Confluence, as well as bike trails. I think that it not only supports alternative transportation in our city, but it provides, it builds identity of a place and provides a connection to the river. It capitalizes on the history and culture of the Confluence of our two rivers. And it also connects people from the Confluence to a highly trafficked area in Phoenix Park and the Farmers Market Pavilion. I think it's important to make it accessible to all people, especially at night and off-seasons. And most importantly, I think that this is an investment and not an expense. This is something that will be iconic and will attract young people and new people to the city of Eau Claire and will encourage more people to move here. I'd like to make it a priority in the capital improvement fund because I think it's a worthwhile project.
Thank you. We'll wrap this question up with Eric Larson.
Thank you. I do hope we can build a bridge for the Confluence. I think it would add an attractive amenity to an area that really, I hope, will turn into an iconic sort of visual area that advertises our downtown and makes it an attractive place to go and stay. I'd like to see a lot of seating there, I like the idea of fire pits. And with regard to spending or the funding for the bridge, I agree with those who have said we should pursue grants, that some giving might be helpful, it would be very helpful. But I want to point out that just recently, as we were going through street projects, we saved $600,000 by not putting a tunnel under Oxford Avenue for the bike trail. Instead, we'll have it at grade. So that's, that's about, maybe even a little more than half the cost of that bridge. So I think the money will be there. I do support the idea of it. I like the way that it would connect to Phoenix Park and the bike trails. There will, there someday be a river walk along the east side of the river, and it would be good for us to have that intuitive connection with the rest of the bike trails.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Just take a breath because you'll start us off on the fourth question here. And it's been five years since the enactment of Act 10. State imposed property tax levy limits have been in place longer. Do you support or oppose these measures? Why or why not? And we will start with Eric Larson.
Thank you. I do not support Act 10. At the time that it was passed, I had my opinions about labor law, and I thought that it did need some tweaking with mediation arbitration laws and some of the things that had worked their way into the collective bargaining process. But I didn't think that we needed to blow up the system when it comes to public labor. And really, what Act 10 did was worse than blow it up. Because what we have now in Eau Claire is four distinct and differently managed groups of employees. We have emergency services with police and fire. We have general employees who are not represented, general employees who are represented, and then transit. And all of them have a different set of rules. The worst part of that is that the general employees who choose to remain representative have restrictions on them that the other groups don't have. If a general employee group decides to be represented, they're limited in wage increases by CPI or Consumer Price Index. The rest of the employees are not. In my view, I think it actually puts more political pressure on the whole employee relations system rather than less. In the past, it was controlled by both sides being required to bargain in good faith and with the understanding that if they did not, it could be overturned by an arbitration system. So that's my opinion on that.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Next, let's go to Kate Beaton.
I strongly oppose Act 10 when it was going through the legislation. I didn't support it then, and I certainly do not support it now. I think it's clear when we compare ourselves to surrounding states that Wisconsin is not doing well, we're seeing the effects of Act 10. Poverty levels are high, unemployment levels are high. In Eau Claire specifically, one in five children are hungry. Hundreds of children in the Eau Claire School District are in the homelessness program. And I think that, I think that's just terrible. I think that governments on all levels need to advocate for their constituents at the state level or at the national level to ensure that their constituents are being protected. So no, I do not support it. I think that we should be opposing legislation like Act 10 and the tax revenue limits.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to Heather DeLuca.
I was good to press my button there. I was opposed to Act 10 when it came through. I feel that it has pushed a lot of our workers to retire at an earlier rate and really has made it very difficult for us to replace those workers. It also has limited workers' ability to negotiate their pay, their safety concerns, and just their general atmosphere in the workplace. I think workers need to have a say in what happens to them on an everyday basis if they are going to have some loyalty to their job. Property tax limits have also tied the local government's hands so that we aren't able to offer the same kind of wages. I know that it's been very difficult for worker, to get workers out of the marketplace. And I know that our city police have been looking, they're short workers, and they've been looking and they've had to go quite wide out to the Dakotas looking for recruits. When they do get a recruit, they are also looking at other places like the Twin Cities, and they offer better pay and better wages and benefits. And we lose those workers to the other communities. We need to try to stay competitive so that we can get those positive recruits for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, let's restate the question for everyone. It's been five years since the enactment of Act 10. State imposed property tax levy limits have been in place longer. Do you support or oppose these measures? Why or why not? Let's go to Tim Telemans.
Thank you. Well, somehow, I don't know how it was, I failed to get the phone call from the governor when the act was talked about. And as you may or may not know, I work at CVTC, I've been a long-term employee here. And I'm program director of the industrial mechanics area. And so I've seen the effects on our education in the K-212, the tech system, as well as the university. And, you know, it's an interesting thing. It reminds me, going back a few presidents, maybe quite a few, when we go to President Nixon, who was faced with the inflation going and decided to react. And the react was, let's freeze wages, let's freeze prices. I get the gist of what they wanted to do, but I think it didn't work as effective as it did not work back then. Over and over, we rediscover that giving local control is the best way. Giving people a voice is the best way. And I hope that the state legislators will take this anew and look at a very effective system. It'd be wonderful if we could control our costs, but we can't. We cannot then have our revenues locked. So we will see what comes up. But I'm hopeful that we can turn around from Act 10 and make it something positive. Thank you.
Question moves on now to David Stroh.
Thank you. My job as a city council person is to work within the budget constraints we have now. I cannot control the state government. I think we do manage our resources differently now and perhaps more efficiently. And I think it also has helped us not increase our property taxes this year. I do think we treat our employees well. We have a new employee handbook that we worked on. And I think the city has had three years of really solid budgets. We've implemented some new policies on fund balance and debt limits. We've changed our budget process to consider CFP and operating budgets at different times of the year. And I think with budget constraints, in the future, we're going to need to concentrate on the core services, roads, snowplowing, sewer systems, clean water, public safety. And with limited budgets, I think that's potentially what we're going to need to concentrate. And I think if the state wants to help us out, they can give us our share of our taxes back.
Thank you. The question now moves to Michael Shon.
Thank you. I also strongly oppose Act 10. The transition has been very difficult for the city employees. The councils and city staff, we did the best we could to manage the transition easy for all staff since the Act 10. I'm not in favor of the tax levy. We should keep public tax low, but we still need additional funds to keep city services. Thank you.
And we'll wrap up this question with Catherine Emanuel.
Every fiber in my being opposes Act 10. The majority of party in this state has been on a complete and total power trip. Act 10 has crippled local control to help people thrive. It's not just Eau Claire that becomes the loser with Act 10. The state has thrown financial handcuffs to every city, every county, and every public school in our great state. When levy limits are lifted, cities once again can better pay their workers, fix roads, and address important infrastructure issues. We need all governmental units to work together, not stifle our potential as a community.
Thank you, everyone. And now we're moving into the closing statements from our candidates here. And each candidate has two minutes for a closing statement. We will begin with Michael Shon.
Thank you. I want to take this moment to thank all the sponsors who sponsored this candidate forum. It is my privilege to have served Eau Claire for the last three years. This year, I run for reelection for the city councils. I believe how these cities need citizen involvement. Each one of us bring different point of views and experience on what we do. My vision is to build a stronger, safer, more clear for the benefit of our future generations. I also support funding for necessary programs, such as police, fire protection, utility maintenance, weapons park, and recreation programs. I also believe strong city in their business developments efforts, which tend to strengthen our neighborhood. And I hope to you all the appropriate, and thank you for being here, and thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Shon. Next, a closing statement from Catherine Emanuel.
As I think about the journey of our city and all of the work that has gone on, I think it's, the story is reflected in one word, and that is grit. I heard a TED Talk recently from a teacher by the name of Angela Duckworth. She defines grit as a passion for perseverance for very long-term goals. Grit is having stamina. And grit is sticking with your future, day in and day out, not just for the day and not just for the week, but for years, and working really hard to make that future a reality. I see that this community works so hard. It's not just people who are elected, it's so many other people in the community who are working hard. I think about what's on our horizon, a winter recreation park, new pickleball courts, food trucks. A pride that our city can have, winning the All-America City Award, a nationally award-winning civic engagement prize. To the work that we're doing to revitalizeing older neighborhoods. And soon, a groundswell of civic conversations that will propel later this year to address poverty. And I hope better align our poverty alleviation efforts across many entities. I think Eau Claire is a gritty city. And I am so honored to be able, to be here at this table, to be here in this community. And on April 5th, I ask for your vote. I would like to serve and provide grit leadership to help Eau Claire be more resilient, to move forward, and to thrive.
Thank you to Catherine Emanuel. Closing statement from Eric Larson.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone involved in organizing this forum. It's the second one I've been involved in. The first one was three years ago when I was first elected to the city council. And it has been a very rewarding experience for me. I've actually been in some aspect of public service since I left high school. So basically, all of my adult life. Immediately after high school, I went into the Navy, came back, went into the National Guard, joined the police department where I was for 28 years, and then three years ago, became involved in the city council. I'm very proud of this community. I grew up here. And the years that I spent on the police department, I've gotten to know the city quite well. I know the issues that are faced in each of our different neighborhoods. I've helped to resolve those issues for many years. I've been involved in city and working with city administration for the last 15 years, including the time on the police department as I was promoted through the ranks and on the city council. I know our employees, I know the city organization. And I'm very proud of our city, not just the community and the engagement we see in from our citizens, but our employees and the people who work every day to make this a greater city. I really love working with them. As far as my impact on the city council in the last three years, one of the first things I did was help to restructure the fiscal policy advisory committee. Since then, it's been, I think, much more responsive to the desire and the direction that the entire council wants to go. I felt like it was being led by a small number of council members and took action to change that so that the entire council has a word on it. I'm very proud of my strong support for the Confluence project and the work that I did on the Confluence Council Task Force. Also, my work on the Plan Commission has been very rewarding. And with the Community Advisory Committee that reviewed our comprehensive plan, and I'm now back from this meeting, I'll be leaving to work on the Neighborhood Revitalization Task Force. And so I've been kept very busy over the last three years. It's a volunteer position, but we work hard to get it. You know, the campaigning is not easy. And the time that we spend on it is very rewarding. Aside from, I mean, we don't do it for money, believe me. So, and I'm very proud and happy to be serving our community in this way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. And a closing statement from Kate Beaton.
I am Kate Beaton, and I love Eau Claire. And I am asking for your vote on April 5th. Before I start my closing statement, I wanted to thank the sponsors. Before I start my closing statement, I wanted to thank the sponsors for holding this event. I wanted to thank everybody here for listening, and I wanted to thank everybody at home who was listening from their couch. So I had the opportunity to get involved in our community by serving on the Conference of Plan, on Citizens Advisory Committee for the update of the Conference of Plan. I was pleased that from day one, we identified poverty as the number-one issue. I was surprised, but I was pleased that my colleagues thought that it was important that we talk about it and address it. That was a year, a year-long process, and we continue to work on issues that face our city, including poverty and others. During that same year, I was in the middle of founding Market Match, a program at the Farmers Market that gives food share participants $1 for every dollar they spend. It increases access to fresh, healthy, and locally sourced food, and it serves the community in more than, more than just that. It feeds people, it puts more revenue into the pockets of the vendors, and it grows our local economy. In November 2015, I worked with the city council to get public support and operational costs for Market Match while the actual matching money was being funded by the private sector. And I think that this is a perfect example of how the Cityville O'Clare and the city council can work to address poverty and other issues like it. So I plan to continue to work on stuff like this and other initiatives, including alternative transportation, bicycle infrastructure, transportation infrastructure, public transportation. And I, I'm excited to do it. I'm excited to serve our community with my energy. If you want to learn more about me and my issues that I'm interested in working on, you can visit my website at www.katebeaton.com. And I look forward to hearing from you all. I, it's a huge priority for me to listen to the people of O'Clare and to respond to them. And so please contact me if you're interested in talking. And finally, I hope to earn your vote on Tuesday, April 5th. Thanks.
Thank you. Closing remarks from Heather DeLuca.
Well, thank you for coming to the forum this evening and taking time out to listen to us. I have been involved in my community. I actually taught in Chippewa Falls for 33 years, and I recently retired. And I had to decide whether I wanted to live in O'Clare or live in Chippewa Falls, and I chose O'Clare as my community that I wanted to live in because of the amenities that it offered: bus, transportation, the university, the arts, the bike pass, things like that. So I was drawn to O'Clare versus where I actually was working. I do believe government needs to be public and open. We need to make sure that we notify citizens of developments that are occurring in their area, and they need to know in advance in a timely manner. I think we need to listen to them. They're the ones that are right around the development. They really know about that area, so we need to take time. I would never want to shorten a meeting if it meant not hearing from people or about that issue. I also believe that government needs to be very open, and we have to be a little careful about what we do in closed session. I think it's many decisions and debates that can appear on the floor. For all people to hear both sides is very important. I am an independent thinker, and I do research. When I was in teaching, I researched, I prepared, I was able to talk off the top of my head to my students in my classes, and so I'll bring that same diligence to the council when I vote, if I get elected. And if I don't know something about an issue, I am not afraid to seek out other knowledgeable people, whether they be citizens or professionals or anybody who has the source of information that I'm looking for. I am, will be searching for that information. The more I know, the better I can make a decision. I'm not afraid to stand up for my convictions, even if it means I'm the only one voting in that direction. I will stand up for my constituents in District 1 and for my taxpayers in my district as well. I just hope that you find I can do a good job for you and you'll vote for me on April 5th. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, the closing remarks, Tim T. Walt.
Thank you. You know, I speak for a living. I'm an educator currently at CBCTV, and this is humbling and nervous to speak before you because I respect you all so much. I've seen the city you've built. I know the people that are volunteering, working, and I'm humbled by that. I've had the great chance to serve on council for the last nine months, appointed in June, and I've seen this city is well-run, that this city is cared for, and it attracts me even more to continue that. I love O'Clare. I have a debt of gratitude. My children are now 21 and 22. They're prospering, and it is because of the joys and base that they got out of O'Clare. I'm inspired by Dave Dux's legacy of a lifetime of just service and commitment that is no mean feat to match, and I shall not fill those shoes if I'm elected, but I will continue to strive towards filling those. The choosing of council members is important. I believe I've got the unique blend of talents: a forward thinker, a hard worker, one who doesn't have to get their way, but one who prefers ideas and goals over agenda. Most describe me as forward-thinking. I can work across all lines. I see it in a little bit of humor along the way, with integrity and honesty. I can meet the challenges yet to come. O'Clare is a wonderful city, and the opportunities are real and before us. My experience dealing with change, how much change? Oh, good grief, never go into technology. It's been changing all my working life, and I continue to teach in technology. It's a fantastic opportunity to have. And so I ask for your vote. I ask for your support. I'm thankful that council gave me a chance to see what it's like. I believe I continue to be the candidate that would be just wonderful, but I'm also in favor of whatever the public chooses. If you want to check out more, go to timtwhalt.com. You know, Google anything close to that name, it comes up. What is that name? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. T. Walt. And we'll close off our closing statements with David Strobel.
Hello, thank you, thanks for putting on the Forum to everybody. I came to O'Clare about 40 years ago to come to go to college at the university. I met my wife there. Graduated with a degree in finance, and we've lived in the same home on East Side Hill for probably the last 32 years. Prior, prior to council, I served in the Neighborhood Association for over 10 years, and then also served on the Plan Commission for two years prior to being elected to council three short years ago. I own a business and I make a payroll. I own and manage a commercial building in downtown. I think I use those real-life experiences to help me ask good questions and to contribute in a meaningful way to council decisions. I come prepared. I think I work well with others, even though we don't always think alike. I think we find areas of common interest, and I guess I would like to continue serving on the council for the next three years. I can't believe three years has gone by. It's, it was extremely busy and very friggin' deep. If I could put a plug in at all on something I'm a little disappointed about, though, I would, I would hope that more people would step forward for public service. We have, we have an election tonight where we have five people running for five positions, and three years ago, we had 10 or 11 people running for five positions. I just, I would ask my fellow citizens in the future to consider public service. Like Eric says, it's probably, it's not for the money. We all serve on a lot of different committees as well, but I think it's very meaningful, and I would ask for your vote in April. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strobel. As we close tonight, a few thank yous to the sponsors of the Candidates Forum, Leader Telegram, WQ, WTB18, 790 Today, and WYY, the Chippewa Valley Sports and Information Station, Chippewa Valley Community Television, we'll be able to see this, and O'Clare Guardian Chamber of Commerce. And on a personal note, thank you to these candidates. They have different views, but they share one thing in common: they all clearly care very much about this community, and that's why they're doing what they're doing. I think they do deserve a round of applause. And remember, votes. Tuesday, April 5th, polls will open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Thank you for attending the Candidates Forum.
This program was recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television. Chippewa Valley Community Television is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, you can contact us by calling 715-839-5067 or on the web at www.ccbtv.org.